Okay, seeing that it's seven o'clock, I'm going to open up the meeting of the Halifax Planning Board located at 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax. We'll be meeting here in the Selectman's Meeting Room Thursday, this is February 20th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Present at the meeting is Vernon Elliott, Amy Truitt, myself, Bert Gainer, Tom Millius, and Rick Murray. Okay, we have the agenda in front of us here. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda for the meeting of February 20th, 2025 as presented?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor to accept the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, let's, oh yeah, I have to make that announcement that the, in the open meeting, you know, it's time, the Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be reviewed on YouTube. Okay, let's go with our first one. The appointments, PSPR 24-2, 01 Ponsett Street, map 95, lot 10, site plan review, and continue PBSP 24-2, 01 Ponsett Street, map 95, lot 10, special permit application. Is somebody here to speak on that? Yes, sir. Your name and where you're from, please?
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, my name is Gabriel Padilla from Brady Consulting. So, we went back and forth with comments with Pat Brennan. Last comments we received, we responded. He got back to us, everything has been addressed. From the changes that were in the plan, we removed some surface drainage, and we corrected some of the things that he had noted in the plans. I would keep it short and sweet. If anyone has any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Quick question, do we have anything in the file regarding Mr. Brennan's findings, questions, and any answers to those questions?
We have it right here.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's right in there.
Do we need to have it all? Or is that, is that what's in our?
Thank you, sir.
We may need it.
Well, that's what's over there, other than the site.
Thank you. But it's all right, yeah, do you want me to read them in the bracket?
No, I'd just like to go through and see, just verify that the points that needed to be addressed, you said were all addressed, and there was any type of, is there another letter saying yes, thank you, they're all been squared away?
I believe at the end of that letter, he does have statements saying that's been addressed.
Sure, why don't you read that then, please?
This email is from Patrick Brennan on February 6th, 2025, sent to Kevin Greedy, and then also various people that represent the boards in Halifax. And it says, "Some questions, comments on the revised plans. The landscape plan is missing. The red part is added to the updated plan."
Yes, actually, in the letter that I provided, those last comments have been addressed. Those comments, I believe, were for the six.
Yeah, I was just saying, maybe you could show us the updated, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Excuse me.
It's fine, we can, just like we're doing.
This is landscaping part of the year that we have.
Okay. Do you recall something about the trees and the spacing from the road, from the Highway Department? Or?
From the Highway.
The Highway Department surveyor did not want trees in the area, which we don't have trees.
Okay.
What's that, that quarter of 1 Ponsett Street?
Yeah, the roadway, I'll do it on.
Oh, to obstruct view or something like that?
Yeah, they'll just grow.
I do, now that you can say that, I can recall that. All right, the landscaping part, which is, that was the first one?
Okay. The second one is, "Where is the note on Sheet 7 specifying the ADS-N12s?" I don't know if it means street or ST pipe and cover? And the red notation is, "I added another note, but the," don't worry, N-12ST was referenced to SH15. What is the N-12ST, so that we all understand?
So, the N-12 pipes are pipes that are actually thicker and do provide H20 loading. Originally, the plan did not have those pipes, so we changed those pipes to have those roof drain and H overflow, roof drains to be 6-inch ADS-N12 ST HTP.
Will you tell?
H for that pipe.
Okay.
Which is H20.
So basically, moving water, or directing?
That is used for the roof drains.
Okay.
Picks up the roof drains and brings into the drainage system.
Okay.
Has to be H20 loading because it's going to be under the road.
Okay.
So that means cars and trucks can go over it, pipes can be fine.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay.
Conservation didn't have any problems with that either, right? I thought they had some concerns about it.
Well, about the loading, yeah. We'll change that, yeah.
Okay. The third notation is, "There are still notes on some of the sheets related to the subsurface systems, Sheet 7 and 8, and then maybe some others." And the red note said, so I believe this is you, right, Gabriel? "I removed the notes related to the SSD."
Yes.
"I word-searched the file, and there are no occurrences of SSD."
Yes, so the plan doesn't have the surface trace anymore.
The fourth notation is, "I do not believe that you submitted the cut and fill analysis, and then you uploaded it as requested." And then Kat also said, "The following additional comments that I verbally mentioned in the Planning Board hearing still need to be addressed." I only have that they need to be adjusted. Do you recall what they were?
The grades themselves, or?
The cut and fill analysis.
The cut and.
Oh, sorry, we addressed that. Oh, the other comments that might have been to do with it?
That's on the final, the final items on the list that I can provide. I believe one of them is a sweat path for the vehicle.
Fire.
For fire, which we're not showing here.
Yep.
The other ones I'm not so sure.
In addition to the above, okay, so you have, the other ones were that you would show the, all the other others within 300 feet?
Yeah.
The lighting plan?
Yeah.
And then the fire department?
Yeah, this is what happened, this is here. The lighting plan, I believe it was separate from this set, but it was provided.
Okay.
Same thing with the radius and the turning, everything for the fire?
Yes, this plan was uploaded, this new plan was uploaded, but that lighting plan, I believe, was separate from.
Right. Was there a new response from the fire chief or anything regarding that, you know, the updated version of it?
I don't believe from the fire department, we did, we did from the path that's.
Oh, just.
That was not, yeah.
I don't think we have anything in writing from the fire department, at least in my documents.
Anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Brennan?
Not I. Did you address the CONCOMs all squared away?
Yes.
Not yet.
They still haven't closed, I believe, but, and there is a hearing next Tuesday for the storm.
Okay, so you haven't got the storm order?
Not yet.
Okay.
But all the items from CONCOM, from the comments that they had, were addressed, pretty much the letter.
That was my next question, if they had, you know, the same thing as Mr. Brennan or whatever.
Well, Brennan's letter actually does cover Planning Board and CONCOM.
Where do we sit with National Heritage?
We have to defer to. All right, come on. All right, we'll go down.
You have one for all of us?
Nice, nicely done.
Logos printed out in color. What a piss-up. All right. That's a refusal.
Under the Well and Protection Act, it's therefore, in the second to the last paragraph, last sentence, therefore, it is our opinion that this project appears to meet the state listed species performance standard for the issuance of an order of conditions.
That's why it printed out in color.
Same thing for the Massachusetts Endangered Species. The last two sentences, as a result of that review, the Division determined that this project can result in a take of eastern box turtle, Division letter dated 10/5/2023. Project resulting in a take of state listed species may only be permitted if they meet the performance standards for conservation and management permit, CMP 321, CMOS 1023.
Is that part of what you're doing with conservation? Do you have?
That should have gone to conservation, I think it's already been submitted to them.
Okay, and did they give you any, like, barriers that you need to put up, or anything like that?
We haven't gone to conservation yet.
Oh, for this?
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll be doing that on Tuesday? Okay, the 25th, okay, gotcha.
You were told.
Okay.
You did well, not that easy to get approvals from Heritage. Fishes and Wildlife.
Do you have an A and R time period planned? Do you know what that is?
Yeah.
That's the subdividing of this lot from the, the whole, no.
I'll have to check, we're not going to see it.
Okay. Do you have a purchase in Seattle?
Contingent on all the permits.
Yeah.
How about the motion, since you, you know, you brought it up, enter the letter from the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife into the record, into the file?
I would just like to see the lighting plan, just to check all the boxes, but I don't, I'm tempted to ask Caesar where it might be, actually.
The what's her name again?
Oh, sorry, the lighting plan?
Oh.
That's the only thing. Caesar! Do you see it?
Hey.
Hi.
Hey.
Can you help us get to the Planning Board, Zero Mon Ponsett file?
Click that.
Oh, the Regulatory Department, that's what I was missing.
Planning Board.
Thank you so much.
And, there you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Updated files. Lighting Plan, thank you. Not that it's going to, like, disturb any necessary neighbors, but just crossing the teeth.
And they have, like, doors over the top so they don't shine out.
Yeah, I was just going to say the shield is going towards, what's it?
At the end of this, I believe.
Thank you, Karen.
Well, your lighting is just on the building.
Pretty.
There's no bulbs.
There's a light drawing over there, there you go.
Now, that's, that's awful.
Yeah.
Can we get it to 3D, maybe?
Real 3D.
No model? Crosslighting plan?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, I'll check, so, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for, hold on, I need to open up the document. PSPR 24-2, Zero Mon Ponsett Street, map 95, lot 10, for, we'll do this, them separate, okay, for site plan review, with the conditions that conservation signs off on the National Heritage and any other storm water management, et cetera, that, and that we follow all other laws of 167 for the town of Halifax, and that we have a successful A and R plan approved. Did I miss something, you think?
I think we've pretty much covered.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, just for discussion, just for clarification, I know there was some work done, do we have anything other than 01 Ponsett Street for address?
Well, no.
I mean, other than map and whatnot?
What happens is the assessors won't assign a number to it until it's physically carved off the property.
Yeah, it's still, and it, like, needs an A and R plan.
Yeah. I mean, right now, we have the master map and lot and, but that's all we can do for the time being.
Okay, I do know there was a discussion on it, it's why I can't see if it got clarified.
Is it all of lot 10? Should we ask that? Do you know? Do you know? Is it all of lot 10?
The?
The lot that we're talking about, is it?
Oh, no, I don't think it is.
Right, so.
Yeah, it's because the Boston, Boston Edison, it's in the middle of all of that. I don't, they don't matter, or is that just an easement? I don't remember.
I believe they don't.
Yeah, I thought they did.
Okay.
Any other questions on anything? All right, I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, ask for voice phone, Brendan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Passes five to zero to zero.
And now the special.
Yep, you want to do the second one?
Um.
To make a motion on it.
Let me gather my thoughts first. Please.
It's a special permit to put business in that zoning district, right? Or is it just?
Well, I, oh yeah, it's just the square footage, that's what I was looking for, because it's not a special permit to do storage, because it's industrial.
That's right, it is industrial.
So it's the square footage, okay. And can we just clarify all that before we make a motion on the exact square footage that we're going over again? Because it's only a few, can we just clarify that so that I know how to make the motion, please?
In terms of the area, trying to, building?
So, we're looking for a special permit to go above and beyond the size of the buildings that are within our bylaws?
When we got that set?
It's 15.
It was 5,100, I know, good change.
Yeah, I think it's 15.
I believe it's 15, and we have a.
23?
20,400.
Is that the largest room?
That floor area, 20,400.
Combined with all of them?
Yeah, I'm going to reference the actual bylaw, just to be, like, so just give me a second to find the bylaw. Thank you, I would have been looking for it a while.
The largest building. We don't have the areas here, so, you have 290 by 20, that's 400, 4,000, 4,800, 4,800.
Because, was the bylaw cumulative, or was it?
I think we did this before, for the storage, the second storage, I want to say, or the first one. No, the one that didn't go through on the 318 property. We, that, we talked about that, and I saw, but that was one building, but then we did go over it again on the one next door to you guys behind, O'Reilly's. We went over that because they had multiple buildings and one building that was larger than the rest, do you recall that?
Yeah, it was a two-story thing.
Yes.
And known here, all commercial buildings or structures, 15,000 square feet or greater in area of all above ground floors are allowable by special permit from the Planning Board, commercial, industrial, industrial two, and conservative, conservative.
And that was the 167-7D?
I believe the, I have a section 167-7D, part 13.
That's, that's where.
It said all buildings, right?
All commercial buildings are 15,000 square feet or greater in area of all.
Technically, each building is separate.
That sounds like each building is separate to me, and not cumulative, that's why I was asking. So, if we were all separate, we wouldn't need a special. You wouldn't need a special permit. That's what I was giving, altogether, it's over 20,000.
Yeah, all commercial buildings or structures, 15,000 square feet or greater in an area all above ground floors are allowable by special, that's what you just read.
I'm not sure it even needs a special permit.
So we got a grand one, just in case?
Yeah, I mean, the special permit's coming, I should.
Well, let's determine this, it says, "All, all commercial buildings or structures." Okay, so that sounds, 15,000 square feet or greater in area of all above ground floors are allowable.
If they were all true together, I'd, I'd be on board with that.
I agree.
I really don't, based on the language I'm interpreting, I don't believe it needs a special permit.
I think it's the difference between, like, a building or a structure being considered like a parking garage, isn't a building, but it's a structure.
A single building.
We're going to have a 15,000 square foot parking garage in the middle of, well, although.
It does, it does say, I mean, like, to me, it could be read, and I'm just saying this as arguments, just a, not arguments, but all territory thought, all commercial buildings or structures, so could they be cumulative to the 15,000?
I mean, if I was making the zoning interpretation, I would say it would be individual buildings.
How about we do the special permit, just for the sake of it, with the condition of you're not going to conjoin the buildings together?
I think that the building inspector probably asked him to get a special permit for it.
So, even with the fire department, it was individually, the biggest building's 5,800 feet, so it doesn't.
So you didn't have to sprinkle it?
Right.
That was, that was all part.
Yeah, I'll just leave that.
They combined them all together, you'd have to sprinkle it there.
Yeah.
What would the next department be that would potentially ask if they had a special permit? Nobody, nobody's going to ask for it.
Unless the building inspector, when he's, when they apply for their permit, asks about it, but I, I'm theorizing, but I don't see him doing that.
So we can also just refer back that we've.
Yeah, like, Dennis wouldn't have had it come up, though, so maybe, maybe we should do it just in case, because.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to do it, you know? You're already applying for it.
Okay.
As you get your money, sweetie.
Yeah.
And just put it so that, if there has to be a condition to it, then just have it, that they won't conjoin the buildings to make one big structure.
All right, I like it. Well, they can anyways, right? So, all right.
That's why, yeah.
On the special permit application for PBSP 24-2, Zero Mon Ponsett Street, map 95, lot 10, make a, we'll go for the special permit approval with the condition that they have their A and R successfully completed, and that they, yeah, I think that's pretty much it, following 167-7D13. It's not D13, it's 167-13. What, should I re-say it?
No.
There you go.
Not necessary. All right, I have a motion on the floor.
I'll say it.
I have a second on that. Okay, we'll ask for any further discussion, any of the questions, any members of the board? I'll ask for voice phone, Brendan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Should start at the other end of the table.
Switch it up sometime.
It passes five, zero, and zero.
Thanks, Gabriel.
Thank you.
Congrats, guys. Good luck on the rest of it.
That was the easiest one since I've been before.
Well, we'll see you again for your A and R plan when that comes through.
Okay, let's move on. We see that one of the discussions was requested that they not be present for the project manager on behalf of Walmart, so that was taken off, so we can move on to discussions of 314 Plymouth Street, Casco, discussion regarding site plan modification. The notation, and we have copies left in our folders from Attorney Kraus, that's requested to be able to appear at our next meeting of March 6, 2025, to give them ample time to change, modify, add, subtract, or at least address the issues that were brought up by the board.
Last time?
From the last time, yes.
Good.
Did we determine, because we talked about having the three easements that were necessary, we know there was one missing, did we confirm whether or not, hold on, let me look and see what this call again?
Like, that came in earlier today, looked at all the easements, the easements that 314 needs, they have, one of the things I was going to suggest is we need to reach out to R and J, because we need to know if their site plan needs to be modified, because everything is conjoined over there. The drainage from 314 is flowing through 318, and I'm, I don't know if 340, if you, just going to ask if you've worked out with R and J, if there was an easement that he needed from you folks, or appeared to need it from you folks.
Your name and address, sir?
Tom, out to 340 Plymouth Street. So, there is a easement, there is not an easement, there's a plan that Silva has put together on the public county meetings website, so there is one left there, that Silva put together.
Okay, when was that, Tom? Like, recently, or years ago?
It was very blocked here, that frame.
Okay, okay. So the plan exists?
The plan exists.
Okay.
An easement has been drafted, and we're working with Mr. Peck right now for a timing of when that easement will be put in place.
Okay, all right, so progress has been made.
So progress is being made, but we don't have anything in writing yet as far as when that easement will be, the pipes will be put in, and the retaining wall will be.
But Tom, is that the only thing, just the date as it went, or has there been actual agreement that's signed and agreed upon?
Nothing's been signed and agreed upon. We're just waiting for that document, as far as the date of when that's going to happen, and that's what we have right now. So everything has been worked out, except for the date of the implementation.
Great, good, that's a huge step right there.
That's, that's progress.
Right, but we need, we need that guarantee on the Starbucks property, the Casco property, that, that that can't continue until this easement is actually.
Well, yeah, I think, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I apologize. I think the building inspector and our engineer has verified that nobody's signing off anything until the drainage is connected. This is kind of a unique situation, because 314's drainage really only goes to 318. It's really the problem from 318 to the country club, which goes through 340. forty. That is three forty, right?
Right.
I just wanted to make sure I was using the right number here. So, you know, once you guys are squared away, then their drainage can.
You guys, as in, Algeson?
As in R and J and.
And R and J, okay.
But prior to that, they're proceeding at their own peril next door if they can't get the drainage to connect, so I, you know.
Right, but again, I don't want Casco to continue, because once, once that is blacked out, all of the drainage, all that water will flow into that ditch and cause us more problems.
Understood, understood. That's why we asked for Casco, or three fourteen, Casco being the engineer, to come in and explain to us what's going on. And in the meantime, I think we need to reach out to Silva, because that plan's gonna be modified as well. And I think we need to give them two weeks here to get some time together and present the plan that we can actually look at and make some sense out of, rather than having the.
Rather than guesswork, is that what we're guessing at this point?
So what we want to do, from what I learned last, at the last meeting, is that this is gonna be added to the requirements for Casco, is to have the three forty Plymouth Street easement installed prior to any further development at the Casco site. And then my other question, actually, it's a statement, but my question to you is, what was the result of notifying the building inspector?
Yeah.
About the building, building permit?
Do I have this letter?
I have the letter.
I can't remember what he said on there. I mean, I've spoken to him, and my understanding is that he's satisfied that they've met their conditions in terms of the easements they need. So the problem is.
Meaning Casco.
Meaning Casco, excuse me, three fourteen. They've, they've sat, he is of the opinion that they've satisfied their conditions. The issue lies in between with R and J's property going across three forty's property. And he says he would not, in fact, ever issue an occupancy permit based on the fact that the drainage is not completed.
And again, like in the last meeting we stated, the town engineer said he would not be signing off on it until that was for occupancy, until that matter was all straightened out.
Yeah, I just, but I don't, I don't trust that.
Well.
I mean, at that meeting last year at this time, your engineer said that this easement had to be put in place prior to any development on three fourteen or three eighteen.
Unfortunately, we didn't put that in the order of conditions.
That's, yes.
But it's out there.
I understand, but if it isn't in the order of conditions, it isn't enforceable.
So you can't revise those?
Well, this is why we asked them to come in, so we could discuss this.
Okay, so is this discussion an option for them, that they can decline? Or is this, is this an order from the planning board that they have to comply with?
We asked, as I recall, we asked for them to come in so we could discuss the need for a site plan modification, because it is being modified, to the sense that that, if, in fact, the storage facility is not going to happen at this time, I don't know if it's ever gonna happen, but at least at this moment, it's not gonna happen, that we need to be clarified, they need to clarify to us, who's doing what portion of the road, how far the road's going. But the road is actually on R and J's property, that's why I was alluding earlier, that they need to come in as well, so that, you know, we can modify that site plan as well.
So Tom, like, part of that site plan, so three fourteen, where Casco has Starbucks and O'Reilly's, part of their parking and their way into the property is on three eighteens, which is why the common driveway, one sixty-seven ten L, is always, is a bylaw. It's not because we're trying to be sticklers, it's to get out of these situations. But then also, that common driveway depends upon, they were gonna do the light, they were gonna put in the light, they were gonna meet it up with, so that all needs to be done, so they shouldn't be doing anything until we get that.
I disagree. I mean, that's for occupancy, so that they can operate the units. But in the meantime, I mean, they've got curb cuts that they already own, that they can access the property with.
No, they don't. It's literally, it's literally on the site plan that they can only leave through that exit to the right.
That's when the facility's finishing. That's not during construction. I mean, that's not even reasonable.
It is reasonable, because their whole entire site plan isn't.
I beg to disagree.
Well.
I mean, not a lot's gonna happen in the next two weeks anyway.
Right.
Everything's frozen, frost in the ground, they're not, they're not being, you know, progressive at all there. It makes no sense to do anything, really, because of the conditions. You can't do anything right the way the conditions are. You know, most companies are working these conditions just to keep the employees busy. You know, that's pretty much what's going on. You know, they get a break in the weather and things will move on, but in two weeks, I can't see anything that does happen, they're not gonna be paving it. So I wouldn't be worried about any water running anywhere. I think it's worthwhile just to wait for them to come in and try to address the problem and, you know, why would we wanna get into a big punch and match about, you know, you can't work and this and that? You know, we don't really, really need to have them come back and threaten us with another lawsuit.
Well, what about the town threatening us for not having the letter correctly written up or, and recorded, because it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't written correctly?
Is it really important to stop them now instead of waiting two weeks?
Yes.
If it's so important to you?
No.
Oh, really? It doesn't make any sense. They're not gonna get a lot.
Well, they're not following the site plan at all, because they don't have, they don't, they're not building the access to it, they don't have.
They're doing the buildings up.
That's right.
That's part of the drive-through. That was the whole reason for that access, was for their drive-through to work, and if they didn't get that access, they weren't even gonna come to town.
Also, their parking requirements.
Built by the.
So you want the parking lot in first before we put the building up? Is that what you're saying?
Well, their parking requirements are on another lot, so we need to make sure of what they're doing.
Well, we have an easement.
But we also have it, that they are only taking a right out of that, so what are they doing? We need to, the site plan needs to be updated. I understand, but they shouldn't be doing any work.
That's exactly what I said. But we've asked them to get in for modification. I'm gonna, we're gonna end this conversation, because this is gonna go absolutely nowhere. I'm gonna attempt to end this conversation. I'm gonna make a motion that we reschedule Casco, and I forget the name of the LLC, but for three fourteen Plymouth Street, to the March sixth meeting, and at the same time, ask to get a representative from R and J, from their engineering people, to come in and also contribute to that meeting on the sixth.
And will our, will our counsel be here for that?
Well, yeah, I'd like to see our engineer here at the same time.
Right. I just, to just button this up, which I would hope lands in your favor, is let's get everybody, get the whole team in the room.
Yeah.
That's what I always agreed to at the last meeting. That's all I wanted.
Right. I understand that. I'm saying the people that we need to call in are gonna be the ones that hopefully are able to facilitate that. That's, that's why. Those are the people in the room that are gonna be able to.
Yeah, and we'll all know what's going on, and we've gotta give them the two weeks so we can get accurate information, otherwise, you know, we're all speculating and we're not getting anywhere.
It's not, I'm sorry, go ahead, Amy.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, and you finish.
No, I was just gonna say, it's not under, I'm not interpreting this in any way that anybody has anything nefarious, like that they're trying to pull over on anybody, whatever, it's just, this is getting deeper than, above our pay grades.
I agree. I don't think anybody had any idea.
Right.
That the storage facility wasn't, wasn't gonna go through. All of a sudden, that's a surprise.
But I think.
That was a.
My biggest question for, for counsel would be, again, about, against, about the letter, how it should have been written and that it wasn't, right? Because it is on record of the recording, so that would be the question of, well, that already is, is date stamped, so what is the repercussions or what are our actions moving forward from there? And then the engineers come in, and then all this other stuff. So I just think, to their point, get all the professionals in a room, and let's hash it out on the sixth, and then.
That only makes sense.
So it doesn't turn into the, well, you, or I, or this, or that, it's just get all the, those people in there.
And I would a hundred percent agree with that, a hundred percent. However, we need to make sure that they know that they need to do a modification where the storage facility is or is not going in. They need to do a modification, because otherwise, they don't, they don't have enough parking, they don't have true access, it's not helping out, all of that.
It's really a modification, nothing's changing, it just.
Well, somebody.
Something's gotta put the road in. It's obviously the storage, you know, the storage buildings, putting the road in. So if these guys want it to happen, they're gonna have to work something out, they're gonna have to do it. And plus the drainage and everything else, that's what it's like to me. Common sense tells me this.
We should tell Casco that, because otherwise, they're doing a whole bunch of work with.
Well, I'm sure they must know why.
Fine, but we should make sure to cross that T, because if they do all this work and then they can't do it.
Tom, the next meeting, they would talk about, that's all there is to it. And we can sit here all day and just pass this off, we're not.
Well, somebody needs to make the light in the driveway and everything, so I, I.
That's why we're asking everybody to come in to find out who's doing.
I understand, but nobody should be doing any work until that happens.
Company's not there anymore, and it's no longer their responsibility. Okay, whose responsibility is it?
So we can modify all plans to reflect what's actually gonna happen.
Right.
But we can't do that here tonight. We need to give them some time to come in and give us the information, present what they need to present, and we can move from there.
Let me modify your motion to say that we need Casco to do a site plan modification.
Yeah, but they don't know what they're modifying yet.
Yeah, isn't that what we're doing next time?
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's what we're gonna discuss, the modification.
In fairness, right, because I completely understand where you're going with that. There's no way, knowing this board, that we're gonna have all those people in this room next time, and anything is gonna be left on the table. Like, everything's gonna be poured out, so.
Which only makes sense.
As it should be. But I'm saying, instead of worrying about the small details now, we'll get everybody in there, because everybody's gonna pull everything out of their pockets.
Because we're just guessing at this point.
Yeah, right, exactly.
What are your thoughts as the, about it?
That sounds fine to me. I just don't want this, I just don't want this to live on. I don't want it to be over.
Right, and I think in the two weeks, you'll probably have a date with Mr. Peck.
Eventually.
You may even be, have a consummated agreement by the two weeks. So this whole thing looks like it'll come together better. We just put it off for the two weeks, we get.
Right, and that's one more concrete thing we could work with, if that, in fact, there is an agreement, if the date is date certain, there's one more concrete fact that would enter into it, so everybody could at least have something to work with, you know?
The more, the more people that we have moving towards this easement, the better.
Yep, that's fine.
You know, I definitely would love to have Casco pushing for this easement.
Well, they have to have that.
Well, they have to have an easement.
Right, something else.
Enforcing Mr. Peck to do the easement. So he's willing right now, but, you know, we did design the easement, and then he said that he wasn't gonna do it, and then he was gonna do it, and then he wasn't gonna do it, so he's been very fickle through this process. So I really want something in place to force the easement.
Does he have other options for drainage out there? These are the questions that we need to discuss.
Because there's several easements out there.
He would, he would have to fight gravity, so.
Okay, all right, so, I mean, that.
That would be very difficult.
Well, it sounds like you, you folks have at least made some progress, even if you're not there yet. And there's a good possibility that your deals or your arrangements will be consummated, like I said, in two weeks. I mean, at least a possibility. And then if that's in place, that makes everything else easier.
Yeah.
And then we just need to clarify who's doing what, and.
Especially when our counsel gives the nod, then that, then we go off of counsel's sense. I mean, he's the guy that's gonna say yea or nay, I mean, in that, as far as what we're gonna do, so.
Yeah, but I think we should still send out some sort of a notification to Casco that says, like, so far, we have no indication that the common driveway is going to be developed and cover ourselves.
They can't run their business if they can't.
Well, we should cover ourselves by letting them know.
Asking them to come in.
I get it, but we should just send them an email and make sure that they're aware.
Or we can let the sleeping bear lie until we get.
But if they continue doing work, then they could say to us, you guys knew and didn't say, and we've been doing this work, and now we can't do this, and then we're gonna have to buy this land, put in this, and put in a light, and we're not willing to do that, so you let us do all this work without notifying us.
Didn't they do all that work before they were supposed to do it?
Well, they were given the building permit, and nobody said anything about the other stuff needing to be done, so we might be leaving our.
I mean, is there a downside to what she's saying?
No.
Or is there an upside? Like, I mean, if, whether there's an upside or not, is there a downside? Because if it's an even, who cares if we send a down?
Yeah.
We can send them an email to tell them to be prepared.
Yeah, okay, so let's do that.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask a simple question on that, Casco? It's not on that. It's kind of on.
You can.
You know what I'm saying? So the whole storage facility was a big to-do, right? And then this project came in behind it with a bunch of agreements that was kind of piggybacking off of that storage facility. And now, once the bigger project got passed, now miraculously, the storage facility is not being built. Am I the only one that's connecting a dot here?
No.
It's like, if we can get that done, then we have a better chance of getting this done, and now that this is done, never mind.
They could, they could have still put the drainage in, gotten the easements if they needed them.
Okay.
And built the driveway and the light.
I just wanna announce the question, because, right, walk like a duck?
Yeah.
Just, you know?
All right, what the motion on the floor is?
Is to.
Send an email to Casco, letting them know.
We can send an email to.
The parties involved.
Yeah, the parties involved, to be prepared to discuss site plan modifications based on the current information or something.
Based on the fact that the parking and common driveway aren't set to be built and that they need that for themselves.
We don't know that. We don't even know officially that the storage isn't going in. That's why we need to have them come in and discuss the site plan, so we can decide what they need and what they don't need.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that we discussed that it wasn't going in.
Well, that, that's from us, hearsay. I mean, I'm assuming it's not going in.
Our board has never received anything in writing.
That's.
Or notification that the, that the storage project was.
Well, it should be on the permit.
So if you did the, if you did the original motion, which was on place, that we pumped this to the March sixth meeting, and in the meantime, also sending a letter to Casco to give them the heads up that these are the things we're gonna be discussing in.
To R and J.
To R and J.
I said, this is what we're discussing, and we'd like someone present on, we'd like to have somebody present on the sixth, we can resolve this, and we can reach out, and to reach out to our engineer, to have him present on the sixth as well, and potentially our attorney.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any additions or deletions?
We have somebody raising a hand, okay, that has been raising.
But we can't do that.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, Chris.
Probably in the middle of a motion.
Oh, yeah, that's right, there's a motion and a second on the floor. We can have some.
We have to wait for discussion, or?
Nope. Well, it's discussion from the board regarding the vote on the motion.
Does it have to do with our motion?
You know what? I'll, I'll call you as soon as we get done with the vote. How's that, Chris? You can stand right there and think, you know? All right, so I have a motion on the floor in a second to revisit 314 Plymouth Street with the parties involved, Costco, R and J.
314, 318?
Three-
Should we add the 318? Because we need our, our-
It's R and J.
Yes, that is R and J. To meet, as, as the request was given by Attorney Robert Kraus, I'll, I'll ask for a voice vote. Look, start of the send, Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes, but I just think 314 is Costco.
Yes.
Okay.
318 is R and J.
Yeah, so we need both of those and that. That's all I was thinking.
Yeah.
Because you feel that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
So just-
And Brendan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Chris, yes, your name and address please.
129 Circuit Street. I've followed this, seems like almost two years now, a year and a half since this first came around. It was like standing room only, first time in Starbucks. And then all the drainage issues with the cell storage. This get to a point if Costco keeps building that they, you mentioned, you know, gets to a point they could sue again with Attorney Kraus? Could they bypass any of the concerns of all the stuff that's been called for and force anything through? Like, if they just keep building, could they all of a sudden sue and say hardship and now we've got this building built and bypass a lot of concerns of drainage and-
Access?
I, I honestly, in my experience, they're proceeding at their own peril if they go too far.
Exactly.
I disagree with that.
They could put up a building, spend the money for putting up the building, not get an occupancy permit, and that seems like a complete waste of an awful lot of money and who would do that, you know?
And it is enforceable. I mean, I've done it. Go to court, you get a court order, you get the sheriff down there and you shut it down.
But they couldn't sue, kind of how they came back for the drive-through?
No, no.
And try to get things-
Yeah, they could.
Force it through?
Very unlikely.
They can sue for anything.
Yeah.
Whether it can be successful or not.
Throw it against the wall and see what sticks.
It's a multi-million dollar company that would be looking at us like, you let us go forward with it. It is possible, that's why we're supposed to act in the best interest of the town.
They weren't going to do it without the drive-through, and the drive-through's not happening without that, without that easement, so that's all there is to it. And I can't see them, I think they're a little bit smarter than to invest a lot into this and not have that.
And I would appreciate too if something is determined, date certain, with your agreement, if you'd let the board know that, at least, at least before the, our next meeting on the 6th, so at least have something-
For that.
Concrete in our hand, okay? At least, at least this is done, you know? I'd appreciate it. Yes, your name and address, please.
Cheryl Howell, 42nd second out. I was just wondering, do we have a rescheduled date for, for my informal discussion about their-
The 6th.
Facility, that's going to-
March 6th, yeah, that's what they asked for. I, I do have that correct.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Yes, March 6th.
Do we know if the plans are put in, I don't know if you know any of their plans, but-
Absolutely nothing about it. Haven't seen a site plan. It was just a, a pick-your-brain as a board. Pick, pick the brain. What, what do you guys think, you know?
Can I put into effect that picking your brain is where we're at back and we can't have a gas station out on that grass area, the area out there?
Yeah, we don't know if it's either going to be out back, if it's going to be on the side, if it's going to be on the front.
It would be very disturbed if they tried to put it out back. It was very disturbed when they wanted to come 40 feet back towards our house. So I don't want to go through more battles with them, with stuff. And if they want to put it out front, put it out front.
I can't put it out back, we have cruise night coming in. Yeah.
Well, it's funny because in their site plan-
I don't see any chance of them wanting to put it up either.
No, it wouldn't make any sense to put it up.
You know, in their site plan letter, they're not actually allowed to have any flea markets or anything like that. I'm just saying.
It's not exactly flea market.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, I, I read their decision letter today to, to look for different things.
Well, there was a lot involved.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I don't want to go down that avenue of fighting again and having my own little plans out and all that when I had to fight when they wanted to come 40 feet closer to my home.
Yeah.
So I'm not doing it again, is all I'm saying.
Yep.
Fight enough that, so in my backyard doesn't need to be a gas tank.
Honestly, I, I've never seen anybody trying to go on the either building.
If they want to put in that light coming back there to reach his own, because if it's going up front, then where's in that light going to come in when we need it? The local there?
Yes.
So, I mean, there's a lot that goes into that, just want to keep your minds open on that.
Absolutely, good point.
But sometimes the parking lot's too full when they go up to that.
Yeah. That is not happening, really. I've been here since 1997, really.
I've seen them land on the grassy hole there too.
Yeah, right.
Really, really cold.
The grassy knoll.
And the 760.
Okay.
They just release those, those out.
And just to bring to the point about this, they also haven't stuck up to the plans that they were supposed to do back in 1997 when it was supposed to maintain between the fences. They were supposed to put the fence up on the top level, they put it on the bottom level, and watch people piss off the side of the building. I complained about it, they put the fence up on the top level. They said they were going to maintain in between, they never did. It is overgrown, it looks like hell, the fence has fallen. I've spoken to them, they don't want to fix it, they patch it. There's a hallway you can see right into where my kids swim in the swimming pool, it's just-
I've had my own battles with them, I own some property on the other side and they kept, everybody kept throwing their trash over behind the fence and the stone wall. They weren't too good about getting out there to clean it up.
Yeah.
I have a problem with the outside saves.
They hatch.
By section permit, you know, where they sell the-
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's supposed to be by section permit. And they just section off a half of the parking lot, you know, to put the soil and fertilizer and the blah, 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 or, you've seen it out there. And then they've also, years in the past, tried it on the other side, you know, like, so.
And to bring up, just to bring up another point about Walmart and this whole thing, is one that, once they put up that mound to bring themselves up to town, that raised out their side, so we have all the drainage coming from all the neighborhood right down into the back of my yard, flows right into the back, both sides, it's just, it's just ridiculous. It just comes down wherever the mound started, over where it can still lay a partial fence back there. So if you're looking from behind the building, it's just from, you know, years, miles of it also. And from there on, the wall, the mound is so high that the water drainage just drains right down the edge of it. And I actually had the attorney for Walmart come in her high heels to come and look at it. And I had an attorney with me to go down there and take a look at it along with Robin,[1511.98]